If we could all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. I know it's budget time when I see some faces out in the audience. Appreciate you coming. There were just a couple of things that I wanted to mention and then we'll get into the agenda. The first thing is, and I'll make this comment brief, the Board is certainly aware and the administration is even more aware of what a hot topic standardized testing has been, both within the district and within the state. There's a number of different tests that our students are taking, the most recent being the Smarter Balance Test, which is to help us bring testing for common core, if I'm correct. And I know because that's being administered by computer, that there have been some challenges with that. And it's very time-consuming for the students. I know that this is something that the Board is going to be looking at closely next year. We appreciate the patience of the staff, the administration, the students, the parents. Let's get through this season, but it is certainly something that is on the radar of the Board and it's something that we will be looking into for next year. The main thing I want to talk about tonight as my comments and recognition is one of the items that we're going to be looking at this evening is we are approving now either the second or third contract with the architect that we have hired for the New Morris High School. Now, it is yet to be determined whether we will be renovating the existing building or building new. While we're looking at new sites, we're also doing an evaluation of the existing facility. But the importance of the contract that we have this evening is it's the Ed Specs document. And what the Ed Specs document is, is essentially it's a process that is required by the state that the architectural firm will lead us through where we as a community, the Board, the staff, the students, the parents, the businesses, have some say as to what our high school is going to look like in the future. That's really important stuff. The building that we build, if we build a new building or the renovation that we do is supposed to last 75 to 100 years. The process for input is going to run while it will be going on going through this process, is really going to run formally anywhere from four to eight months. So within that window, there will be public meetings throughout the community that will be led by the architects deciding what's important to this community and that will impact the design of this building. Probably one of the most important things that this Board and this administration will do because it will be one of the longest-lasting things. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the community if they weren't aware this was going on. And I also wanted to mention that a lot of you or a lot of folks, maybe even people on the Board, you know, the things that they say or the questions or statements that they make are, they believe that when it comes to this process, there's someone else out there who's probably more knowledgeable than I am. The other statement that gets made is this building will get built with or without my input. And the last statement that comes up is I don't even know if I have a role in this. The answer to all of those questions can be yes, yes, and yes. You may not have a role, there's probably somebody who's more knowledgeable than you and this building's going to get built with or without your input. But that said, it is so important to the community, to the Board, that we take the opportunity to carve out some time to participate in those meetings, to be part of that process. Because you never know, the ideas that you may have may really impact a design feature in that building and could change something for generations to come. And you're not going to know unless you participate. So this is sort of my public service announcement to say that this process is well underway, but the public input part of it is right on the forefront. And I think, as I said, those meetings are going to happen within the next four to eight months. And I just encourage you to monitor our website, call Central Office, call Morris High School, communicate with other friends and family and let them know that this is going on. So get off my soapbox on that. We will now move on to item 4.0, approval of Ed Minutes of February 26. Is there a motion on those minutes? Moved to approve by Alan? Seconded by Bill? Any changes? Take a minute to look those over. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I have one, I want to add to 7.3, the Reapportionment Committee. There'll be a report from the Reapportionment Committee. Patrick, was there any other?
No, I think you received the policies for a first read. So that should be, I think it's on the second page, but we have four policies. It's appropriate for a first read.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other adjustments? Okay, item 6.0, Public Comments Session. Just to let you folks know, we have two public comments sessions. We ask that the first one, if you have any comments specific to the agenda tonight, this would be the time to speak. Just please come up to the microphone. I ask that you keep your comments around two minutes and just state your name. If there's something that you want to speak about that isn't on the agenda, we do have a second public comment session at the end of the meeting. So I'll turn it over to you folks.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bigham. I live in Woolwich. I am a third grader, a sixth grader at Woolwich Central School. I have two concerns. One is for my daughter's sixth grade class that hasn't been taught foreign language since first grade. This is the class of 2021. We expect her to be proficient in a foreign language in order to graduate. The state has made mandates for a language. Again, our RSU eliminated its one remaining teacher taught middle school class to have students learn on Rosetta Stone three years ago. And that's no longer offered at all, even Rosetta Stone four. If this continues, my daughter went all the way through eighth grade having no exposure to another language since her first grade year. She'll receive an idea next year that her global learning will not include knowing anything but English. She'll not be able to understand any foreign music, foreign films, world news, or even understand the language of our close neighbors, Canada. The second most popular language in our country is Spanish, which we might have spoken too. This affects hundreds of our middle schoolers right now at both middle schools who have been doing proactivity. And I don't think we should ask for a waiver anymore. I think we should have foreign language at our middle schools. My second concern is the school board's policy on class sizes. It was enacted in 2011 and it makes its recommendations for class sizes in the RSU. The majority of the classes at Woolwich Central School are way over the recommended amount of students, while other schools in our district and other classes are under the minimum amount of students recommended in the policy. Woolwich Central School is a great new staff, a new facility, a great staff. The body's crowded and I don't know why, lots of other students are being placed there for various needs. But we're seeing kindergarten classes in 23, kids all the way up through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in 20-plus class sizes. So I hope we'll better examine policies or school choice policies that are going to keep our class sizes much lower at Woolwich. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Okay. We will move on to Committee Reports, item 7.0. We'll begin with item 7.1, the Morris High School Building. I'll turn that over to Bill.
We did meet and discuss the ongoing efforts of our contractor in meeting with faculty, students at Morris High School. They have been compiling a lot of information from those meetings. And we also discussed the request to the Board here tonight for the additional services that are going to be necessary to move on with the project.
Are there any questions for Bill? Patrick, did you want to add anything?
So we have 11 people on the building committee and they're kind of the overarching committee to make decisions that would be brought back, recommendations brought back to the Board. So one thing that we're currently doing, that we updated them on is we are, our architectural firm has looked at the communities that are in RSU one and given us some suggestions of parcels of land that might be appropriate to build a new school on, even though that option has not been decided, it's something that we need to explore. And so we have been spending some time on the phone calling realtors as well as private owners of land to ask them if they're interested in us possibly going to test those sites for environmental reasons, for burnout pools, those types of things. So we're in the process of that. As Tim mentioned, any of you that are here tonight or any of you that watch this, we are going to put out a press release probably tomorrow or the next day for people that are interested in being on a subcommittee. And so some subcommittees will not last that long. For example, if you're interested in the site selection process, that may last three more months. If you're interested in being on our Green Efficiency Committee, that might last a little longer. The concept design at Morris High School and public relations as far as helping us as a district make sure that we get the word out about the process that involves, you know, a new more renovated Morris High School. So please look for that press release and we'd like to have a handful of people from the community on each of those committees along with our own staff. So I think that would show. Our next meeting is April 1st and we have those meetings usually around 12 o'clock or 1:00 with our building committee and other meetings over to the public.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Patrick? All right, we'll move on to item 7.2, Finance Committee. I'll turn that over to Steve.
Thanks, Steve. The Finance Committee met several times this month. We've sat with the administrators over two very lengthy sessions and reviewed in considerable detail what budget recommendations they had for this upcoming year. We've again, after those marathon sessions, asked Patrick to go back and look for some additional cuts in the budget, totaling around $500,000. The budget's very much at a formative stage and I think during the business section of the meeting tonight we'll get a detailed presentation of that from Patrick. There are handouts on the table and Patrick will focus and pick those up before I recommend the due and will consider the budget in more detail during the business.
Any questions for Steve on Finance Committee? I've got a couple. I just, I wasn't able to attend those meetings with the administrators and for those of you who were there, I was wondering if you could just highlight either some of the areas of need or areas of consideration that were talked about during those meetings. That just might enlighten me a little bit when we talk about budget.
Well, I think there were several areas of need we were looking at with the possibility of some suggestions for behavioral consultants in the district to augment our guidance and support our staff. The issue of foreign language came up in the business room, unfortunately. And I think the Finance Committee reacted pretty favorably to that. On the maintenance and facility side, I think we're doing fairly good shape for the bond with work on the bond that was recently completed as put as in fairly good stead. There were and are on the table, I think, some recommendations from Dave to perhaps accomplish a few more things in the elementary schools under the bond. Additional textbooks, I mean usual, I won't say usual suspects, but there's always requests from teachers for additional, the administration for additional teaching materials, textbooks, art technology programs. It's in pretty good shape. There is a recommendation from Dean on the technology side for overhead projectors and whiteboards. Paul's for all the elementary schools. I don't know if anybody else has come up with anything off the top of their head.
Security into the block seven to make sure that that's covered in the afternoon because if it isn't, then that makes the whole building uns secure. So that needs to be specified.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Finance Committee? All right, we'll move on to item 7.3, Reapportionment Committee. I'll just kind of give you a brief update on where we stand. That committee is made up of one town or city elected official, one citizen that was appointed by that city or elected official, and then one board member. So there are four of us on there representing each of the four communities in the RSU. We met last week, I want to say it was Wednesday. I think that generally it was a really good meeting. I think that there was a lot of consensus, just sort of laying out the groundwork and talking about how we want to restructure things in the future. I think generally there was a consensus of getting away from districts that are made up of multiple communities and looking at strictly community representation, not subdividing those communities. We talked about the possibility of increasing the size of the Board to a nine-member Board and then we talked about some possible breakdowns in terms of what the representation would be. There were some questions that came up that I hope have answers to and our next meeting is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. So I'm hopeful that it's a good group and I think we're going to make headway very quickly. Any questions on, did I pretty much cover it all? Okay. Yeah, the recommendation, what happens is the committee will make a recommendation and will go to the Department of Education. If the department feels that it meets state stipulations or statute, then they would approve it, would come back to the committee, they would approve it, and then we would make the changes. So it's a fairly streamlined process, but it does need to get approved at the state level, whatever. And it's a 90-day committee, so we're not going to meet any more than 90 days. Cover it? Go ahead.
If there's a change in representation that requires an election, does the election have to be held? What's the prescribed time period for which that election has to be held? Because it's not going to coincide with, let's say, the vote on the election.
I think from Patrick's standpoint, there's two answers to that question. And I don't want to speak for you, but it was my understanding that when Patrick consulted with the attorney, the intent was to, as much as we could, preserve the current members of the Board who are on the Board until their terms ended and then there would be transition if there were any changes in the future. If we were going to increase the size of the Board, I think that that would be left up to a discussion amongst that committee in conjunction with the RSU as to when those elections would be held. But there isn't any definitive date as to when, if we were to increase the size of the Board, when those elections would be held. So we're not there yet in terms of the date and it'd be hard to pick a date if we haven't decided to.
I think you have to have a special election phase on it to use that sound.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? All right, we'll move right along to item 8.0, Superintendent's Report.
I just want to report, you saw something from Mr. Berkowitz in his report about, we have people that are volunteering from the Navy associated with the USS Sunwalt that are coming. I'm not sure if it's going to be on a weekly basis, but we have people that are showing up in uniform to volunteer their time to go up for recess, eat lunch when our students are Fisher Mitchell. And so far it's been a great partnership that our students and the Navy personnel are really getting a lot out of it. Speaking of Fisher Mitchell, a couple of weeks ago I had the good fortune to go over to Fisher Mitchell and see Mr. Berkowitz fake not one pie to the face, but two or three pies to the face. And it was just a good show of school spirit and also to raise money for a good cause in a quick period of time. So he took one with the team, so thank you Ross for being here. Honesty of the mind, we had 10 teams in the district that competed recently and, you know, it's good for them to be able to compete against peers across the region. And we have one team at Morris that is qualified for states and I would just like to congratulate all the students that do honesty of the mind as well as any parents that are out there that volunteer your time to be the coaches. Geography bees, we saw those in a lot of newsletters. You know, they can answer a heck of a lot more geography questions than I could ever in my career. And we have numerous students that are going to the state bee on March 27th. That's coming up soon. Constance, and that's me who actually ironically walked into the room a few minutes ago, so it's good timing. But she's an art teacher at Morris and she's received the 2015 Outstanding Service to the Professional Award from the May Art Education Association. So if you could just stand since you're here. Congratulations. On that same note, the Fine Arts Night was held a few weeks ago at Morris and just a great display of student artwork and performances by choral and band as well as the one-act play. So unfortunately I couldn't make it that evening, but I know that darned Mr. Wiggerton, it was a night that was very impressive. The seventh grade house and the entire seventh grade at BMS raised over $2,000, I think, but it was within a couple of weeks or a month. And that $2,000 is going to support two food trucks in the community. So I'd like to thank the seventh graders and the staff at BMS for raising that amount of money and giving back. BRCTC had their skills competition in Bangor that you always approve, that trip. And I think we had 15 students that went this year. And again, another opportunity, opportunity from an academic vocational side to compete against peers. And last, well, a couple of things. One is Anton, a sophomore at Morris High School. If you saw the main Sunday Telegram, was recognized as an all-state swimmer for us at Morris High School. And then the last thing I'll just touch on is one goal that we have as a Board and as a district is to improve communications, to improve public relations, wherever you want to, however you want to categorize that. And we have been working with a consultant and I just want to report back four things. We met again last week and four things that we plan to do that are just, I guess I would say, small steps to improve in this area. One is to launch a Facebook page for the district. I know we have probably seven or eight either schools or programs in the district that have a Facebook page, but by April 6th is to have a district Facebook page and this is foreign to me a little bit, but a thousand likes by May 4th. So I think that is doable and that's our goal. And Rob Morris, who's not here tonight, whatever our administrative assistants is in charge of that at Central Office. There will be a Morris brochure, high-end brochure, like you would see at Wayne Fleet, NYA, that will be created and will have comments from alumni, from current students, from parents. And that will be distributed to realtors, will be distributed to incoming families and parents as well as circulated around our towns at different businesses and organizations. And superintendent column done on a quarterly basis and we're going to try to get all three of our local papers with that in addition to using our websites and other avenues. And last but not least, one step that we're going to try to initiate for next year, but this will be more of a kind of a stretch one, is to find students probably at Morris and also find the equipment and someone to hopefully lead this, is to have a student-led cable show on the path cable. But I think also in some of our other towns, we might be able to allow that to be viewed as well and having the students lead and highlight things that are going on in the district. So I just want to give you a quick update on that as well.
Okay, any questions for Patrick? Then we'll move on to item 8.2, Financial Report.
Good evening. A financial report for the end of February shows that we have spent about 59.9% of the budget, which is compared to last year about 58%. So once again, we're in target with where we were last year. We continue on a positive note. There isn't anything unexpected that has popped up to put us in the deficit. The report you have in front of you shows an encumbered amount of $8 million and that basically is covering salary and benefits for the remainder of this school year. And our revenue was coming in as planned. We did have Lori Burhoe receive a grant for the local garden, $300 that just came in this past week, so that was good for her. And David's hoping for warm weather so that we won't eat away our whole fuel budget. So we're about 30% remaining and things are looking good.
Any questions on the financial report? Thank you. Okay, for item 9.0, All Business, the only item we have here is review of Board goals. We have to brought up the communication goal. I know that we've got some presentations with regard to programming, which is goal number four in the next couple of meetings. Is there anything else here with regard to goals that people wanted to touch on this evening? All right, then we will move on to New Business. We'll begin with item 10.1, Personnel Items. 10.1A, we have one resignation. Patrick?
We have one resignation, Rosalie Perkins, who is our coordinator for the pre-K program. And Rosalie retired from the system last year and then she came back in a part-time capacity this year. So she's been with us for one year as a coordinator role and she's been a true champion, you know, for the pre-K program. know, for the pre-K program, but she's decided it's time to go do different things. So I'd like to thank her for all of the years of service through R S G one.
All right, item ten point two, this is the big one, the one you've all been waiting for, first reading of the F Y two thousand sixteen budget. Patrick?
Yeah, just take us a second, we're going to do a brief PowerPoint that I'm not going to read to you, I'm just going to show you what the content is, and then after that, Deb Clark and I will walk you through the financial piece that goes along with that. So, some of these slides are going to be near the end, maybe a little difficult for you to read, but hopefully you have a hard copy with you. So I'm just going to walk you through this just briefly, so. Our mission. Next slide. So, every budget season, these are the two things that we try to balance. You saw in our mission vision, the word global, that it is something that the administrative team, the board, you know, we talked about foreign language, it's already been mentioned tonight. There are many items, as you'll see later in this presentation, in priority one, two, and three, that we want to see in our budget. But then the second bullet is trying to be reasonable when it comes to the taxpayers and balancing the educational needs of our students. Next one. I'm not going to speak to this one, but you can see the numbers, and probably what would catch your eye is the fifteen, sixteen, and for those of you that live in one of these communities from a taxpayer standpoint, you would be pleased with that. However, just remember that we're building a budget without West Bath in this budget, so obviously you would expect to see a decrease, and we'll get into the fine details a little bit later. I'm not going to run through this, but I think it's very important for a school system or any organization to know exactly how many employees you have in it, break down to the quarter percent, and some of these positions are funded, most of these are funded through the local budget, but there are some positions that are funded through Title I, local entitlement. So, again, these include all of us, all of food service, secretaries, any staff, administration, in either the local budget or from federally funded programs. So three hundred and seven is the total. The next slide is enrollment trends over the last five years. You can see from ten to fifteen, it's pretty constant or it's increased. And again, we're doing our best to take a senior class, then look at the pre-K program that we have now, and then also taking out West Bath, so that's why you see that, you know, a significant drop-off there from a district standpoint. And again, that's just a projective, it's the best we can do at this point. State subsidy, you can see, the only point I want to make here is we're receiving a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars more in state subsidy for the F Y sixteen budget. A lot of people would want to know and ask this information every year, goes around debt service. So if you look at the blue shaded areas, you can see they tell you the project that was done in the past. So for example, take vocational Morse High School in nineteen ninety-six, and then you take the Woolwich Central School. And those ones in blue are state-supported, and it tells you the state share. So that, if you add those two up, it's about eighteen million dollars, but again, that's from the state's contribution. But if you take the things that are in the white, that averages about three point six million locally that we have in debt service. The one I'd point out to you is about three-quarters of the way down, right above Woolwich, is the R S G one system-wide renovation project. That's the one that voters approved last year, and that we are still in that process right now. And it's a, it's a ban, a bond anticipation note right now, that we are simply just paying interest on. It will, we will, at some point, when it makes sense for us financially, we will go, you know, we will bond that, so that will change. Each year, the administrative team gets together, there's about fifteen to sixteen of us, with input from our staff as well, and trying to prioritize what we really need to do in year one, two, and three. Sometimes we get a little frustrated, because sometimes things stay in year two or year three longer than what we want. However, I think over the last two years, we've been able to implement a fair amount of new programming to the system, which is encouraging, but really, if you needed to, with the ad team met last week, middle school foreign language, and having our pre-K program, which is three days a week right now, moving that to five days a week, were the two biggest priorities for us. And then, just for those of you that are here tonight, and also anybody that might be watching, it's just the important dates that are coming up that include budget forums, as well as the May twenty-sixth district budget meeting, and then the June ninth referendum So just a couple things is, we're in a situation unlike other communities, there's some communities nearby that are forced to cut a million dollars, are forced to cut five hundred thousand dollars in our cutting program. We are at a point where the finance committee asked us to cut five hundred thousand dollars. It was from non-labor, it was not from personnel, so we feel fortunate in that respect. In this budget, one thing for pre-K is we will have wrap care now at all of our sites, so that parents can take advantage of that, because we've realized that there are parents that are not selecting R S G one sites for pre-K because of that issue of trying to pick up their kids at new time. This year, the board voted to add a teacher at Pittsburgh, that teacher is still in this budget, and technology, we've been able to put that into the bond, so we have an elementary refresh of our computers and our computer labs at all of our elementary schools, as well as projectors at, you know, over eighty projectors at a variety of our locations. So again, maybe we're not adding as much as we want to in this budget, because we're trying to be responsible, but from an administrative team standpoint, middle school foreign language and pre-K would be two items that, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't advocate for those, trying to get that into this budget this year. So, any questions you have at this point, Deb, do you want, I mean, everybody, did everybody get a handout that had a lot of numbers on it? If you have that one? There's like six pages to it. And I'll let Deb, I'll let Deb walk you through those, and then we'll see if you have questions.
Okay, this year, this sheet is a little challenging, because West Bath is not included, so it appears from the basic revenue and expenses that the local contribution is decreasing almost two million dollars, and the bottom line is decreasing a million dollars. And that is the case if you compare budget to budget, but then when you go down, so basically, to walk through this, you can see that our tuition revenue has increased seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, our state subsidy is up a hundred and seventy-one thousand, and the local contribution is down almost two million, like I mentioned. Total budget is twenty-seven million, three twenty-two, six hundred, which is a decrease of a million twenty-nine, and the expenses equals that same amount. But as you move down, you can see that the impact by town shows increases and not decreases. And that, once again, is because of the elimination of the contribution from West Bath, that's one of the factors. So if you look at Arauska, this current proposal shows an increase of three point nine nine, Bath is an increase of four point six nine, Pittsburgh is six point six three, and Woolwich is three point seven three. We put in the center of this middle colored portion, a total local contribution distribution without West Bath, so you can truly see the impact of, by town. Way to the left has West Bath in it. We just thought that it was very misleading without showing really what the dollar amount is by town. Down on the bottom gives you different facts of how the cost-sharing formula is calculated, it's using resident enrollment, and then we come up with a total pupil cost, we subtract the state subsidy from that calculation, and then that equals the town assessment. So the cost-share formula is cost per pupil, it's determined by subtracting all of our miscellaneous revenues from the total proposed budget, and then we subtract the debt service payment that the state actually sends us for those state-funded projects, and we come up with a factor, and that's divided by the total number of pupils, so then we come up with a cost per pupil. That cost per pupil is divided by the number of pupils by town, and then we subtract the state subsidy from that to come up with the town assessment. And the pages behind that, page two, breaks down the expenditures by cost center, and as you can see, everything looks like it's really good. Be good if the local appropriation matched that decrease, but once again, all of these expenses, or most of these expenses are down because of the elimination of West Bath. And then pages three through six is a breakdown of more detail within those cost centers. So, that's our first proposal, and Patrick, is there anything else that you want to add?
Patrick, can you just, for the board's sake, again, because this is the first time we've looked at a budget quite this way, normally we're looking at the same thing year to year, and because of the change in the district, we're looking at some very different numbers here. Based on those early discussions that were held with the finance committee, what, in terms of staff and programming, what's in this budget and what's out of this budget? What has been added and what has been removed?
Nothing, nothing's been removed from this budget, I mean, as far as personnel. When we went back and cut to five hundred thousand, it was nonlabor, and it was, you know, I have a list here, it was mostly nonlabor, we made an adjustment for oil, we've transferred a few things in staff development to federal money to get it out of the budget, so we made some shifts, I would say. So there's nothing that's been cut as far as staffing goes. And then, in the first iteration that we've, of the budget to the finance committee, the only program that was added to the actual budget was pre-K, and it was in there from three days to five days, but we removed that when we were directed to go back and find five hundred thousand dollars. So, as that stands right now, that programming is standing at three days a week right now in this budget.
Sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
So I apologize if this is kind of a wobbly question, but I'm just looking through the first time, the special ed instruction section on page three, tuition secondary, am I reading that that's an eighty-five point eight percent increase in cost? Is that kind of what you meant?
Yes, and, but you will notice that in administration, that is down, and this is where, with special ed instruction, there's two, I mean, tuition, there's two components. One is the tuition that we pay to, say, private schools, and the other is the main care portion that the state comes in and pulls from our subsidy on a quarterly basis. So that portion, that main care portion, is budgeted within administration, and it's in that contracted fees at the bottom of the special ed administration. So what you're seeing here is a shift between the services that some of these students receive that are classified as or can be contributed to main care services versus regular strict tuition. So it's a shift. So it shows a hundred and one thousand dollars increase in secondary tuition, but it's down in the administration piece, and that's the difference of, basically, the shift between tuition and main care.
Any other questions on the budget? So talk to me, because again, I didn't see, I wasn't there for the original meetings, what did the original budget, we were looking at, what was the original, I mean, it was another five hundred thousand dollars?
Right.
The finance committee asked that this budget be cut down, and what we're seeing here is the original budget minus the five hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and the increases were, do you have it in front of you, Patrick? They were about nine percent for some of these communities, and that was because, based on what the finance committee thought, it was just too high, and, well, that's the reason why they directed us to reduce it by five hundred thousand.
Okay, and then also, based on our new, you know, on the new cost-sharing formula, because we're charging the same person to each community, some communities have seen more students, so Pittsburgh went from two thirty-six to two forty-two, so even if we had made cuts, they would have still seen an increase because they have more students. Whereas Woolwich went from four hundred and thirty students, they lost ten students, so their increase wasn't as significant just based on that per student. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then of course, the subsidy, you know, plays into that factor as well.
Right. Any other questions from the board, Steve?
Not so much a question, I guess, just a, kind of an insight into what these guys have been thinking on the pre-K. I think the board, working with Patrick and the community, the community providers in large, has really built an excellent pre-K program. The administration's recommendation of three to five would add into the budget, and we asked that they take a bit of that again, and as Patrick indicated, what was presented here keeps the program at three days, three days a week. But we are providing, we will be able to provide a But we are providing, we will be able to provide a wrap service this year using some of the community providers to work within our school-based sites and provide afternoon coverage for those kids. So we're hoping that that will help increase utilization of the program within the RSU sites. And we didn't quite meet our enrollment objective this year. We've budgeted, I can't remember the exact numbers, but my budget for 120 songs, and actually I don't feel like 100, I think, somewhat similar in that way. So it's hopeful, we're hopeful that with wrap coverage, we'll see enrollment come back a little bit. And then perhaps next year again, we visit the, what I think is Patrick's, the administration's hope that we'll eventually move to a five-day program. But this puts a little savings into the budget of the original proposal and still maintains the integrity of our pre-K program for the rest of the year.
Any questions for Steve? Alan?
I guess I should drive to the philosophy of you to pay now and pay later. I think we ought to take a very serious look at going five days for pre-K. I think it's going to eliminate a lot of problems down the road.
Deborah, do you know what was the cost to the budget to move to five days?
If we increase pre-K from three days to five, based upon some recommendations by Rosalie, it would add 27,400 to this bottom line. Rosalie recommended, we have 15 students attending the community providers at two community providers, and then we have 12 at one. We have three community providers. In this budget is 12 and 15 and 15. And she's recommending that we go to 12 at all three of those providers and we could save the cost of tuition for that. And then reduce the coordinator stipend a little bit and have it just be, oversee a little bit less than what it was this year. And then she had a couple of other recommendations as far as staff development and supplies. And based on all those recommendations, it would cost 27,400 to add it back into this budget to become five days a week.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments on the board regarding pre-K? Any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm on board with Alan's comments and I advocate that we go back to the drawing board and see if we can find that 28K somewhere. I really would like to see that prioritized for the year 15, 16, and school year rather than waiting another year for it. I think it's needed in the community and I think that we should be providing it. We've proved that it can work, now let's expand it to five days.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board about pre-K? I think, you know, from my standpoint, and this is the first reading of the budget, but the finance committee has already had one kick at this, is, you know, as I said before, we've got, this is a very different presentation than we've seen in the past. And it's hard to compare this budget to last year's budget because we, you know, we're without one of the communities. That said, you know, the administration's already cut half a million dollars out of this one. And we're still looking at, you know, increases to the municipalities from the education side. It wouldn't be, you know, total increase, but, you know, anywhere from a 3.7 to 6.6. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that. I know that this also, you know, I'm a supporter of pre-K, I have been, and, you know, on a $27 million budget, $27,000 isn't a lot of money to impact, you know, early education. But there's a lot of things that we'd like to put back in the budget. So I think, you know, we just need to try and balance, you know, balance both sides of that. Is there anything else with the budget? And I'll, what I'll do is I'll open this up to the public, but I won't allow for board discussion first. Is there anything else from the board? Board members want to address with this budget? Any questions you have? As I said, this is sort of a new format and for some of you, this is barely new stuff. So please feel free to ask questions. This is important, important stuff and now is the time to do it. Okay, nothing from the board? All right, then I'm going to take a couple minutes, let me just look through the agenda. Because this is the first reading of the budget and I know, you know, some of you folks might have some comments, and again, this isn't, I don't want to get into a discussion, but if there's anyone from the public who has questions or comments, I'm going to open up the mic for probably about 10 minutes. And feel free to come up, just state your name and address the board if you have any issues or things that you want to bring up about the budget. Is there anyone from the public?
Hi, everybody. See if I get this right this time. Most of you know me, but many of you don't. I'm Lauren Orion from Woolwich. I'm a proud mom of two Wildcats. Happy to be and honored to be the president of the PTA. And also very honored to have worked with these, many of these people, starting my third year on the finance committee for the RSU. Today, I'm putting my parent hat on and I'm sorry if I'm being repetitive to those of you who've heard me the other day in finance. I'm just here to echo what Sarah Baimo said, foreign language, so I don't need to repeat all of that. I do want to say I did take a little bit of extra effort to try and understand from the Department of Education what our legal requirement is. I was pretty confused. You know, Facebook's all rampant with stuff and it's a law and we're not complying and how come? It is a law. There's not a whole lot of meat as far as enforcing it. So my understanding is that while there's a law that we should comply, it's not like we're losing funding or anything through noncompliance. That is going to change with the proficiency-based education. So hopefully, we're not going to end up on a report card someday for not complying. So I don't need to say anymore about that. I would just love to see it be back in. We've done great things, as Patrick had outlined, guidance, alternative education, health education, a resource officer, and other things. So hopefully, foreign language can be added to that and we can go back to the drawing board on that. And quickly, I'm not going to make some friends here, but also, while the flow trip is in the budget, again, for its second year, and I understand it was a success and it felt good and it had many benefits that extended beyond the classroom, some scheme building, social benefits. When we're looking at the possibility of putting a good dent in pre-K from three to five days, possibly buying desks at Fisher Mitchell outright instead of bonding them, other things that we could put into foreign language. As much as I love the idea of community trip and I truly do, I admire more of the quality of work, I really do, the partnerships that have, that are in place because of it, when I'm looking at other priorities, it's just hard for me to pass the street face test with it, I guess. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Again, thank you. It is an honor to work with these people. Ton of stuff on their plate. So thanks for, thank you, I'm turning.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Hi there, my name is Amanda Boyd. I have a daughter in Pittsburgh right now. I have, can I ask a question about the preschool stuff that you were just saying? So on the, in the budget, it's looking like next year, the preschool at Pittsburgh will be on the site anymore. Will it happen? Does it dash through it? Yes? Page three, midway down, preschool, Pittsburgh elementary, 521 this year, next year, dash, minus 9% budget.
That's not the actual pre-K program. Sorry, that was just, so I'm going to clarify, you want your deferment? That is the choices program that they had to move on the pre-K program, with Rennie Seko and West Bath as well, and then this was a little stipend amount. It was a lot. It was a choice. It was a choice.
Great. So this will be a pre-K program, but no chance the students will be attending there. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're looking at the 540,000. Yeah, that was just a small honorarium for a program that we used to do in the past that really, but it has nothing to do with.
Awesome. I just wanted to make sense of it. Thank you. And then otherwise, I'm here kind of representing the Pittsburgh SAG, the Student Advisory Group. They met this past week and a number of parents had concerns around trying to make sure that each, each class grade had their own individual classroom and own teacher. So I'm here to kind of thank you guys for keeping in the budget, our permanent teachers, so that we can deal with that as is. And also, the second concern that came up had to do with our busing. A lot of parents feel like our busing works takes too long or buses are a little bit late or, you know, the students have to ride for an hour, et cetera. So a lot of suggestions are going, can't we get a third bus or a different option? So I don't know if a third bus is the right option or not, but I'm here to kind of represent that concern and also just to kind of brainstorm maybe alternative ways to try to make those bus rides shorter or make the wait a little bit shorter. So thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Does the state mandate pre-K?
No.
And the 100 kids that you mentioned, is it for enrollment, is it based on financial need?
When I, the 100 kids for what?
For pre-K. Do, how do they get, how do they become eligible for pre-K?
They apply. They apply and send for it.
So they have to live in RSU and that's it?
There's no, we don't test them.
But no, do, do they have to pay anything to get a pre-K? I mean, is it, you only get in if you make a certain amount of money? Is there any kind of financial need based on whether or not you get enrolled?
No.
Okay. And we pay the per pupil rate for all our pre-K kids. So the amount of money you pay for a kindergarten is the same amount we pay for a pre-K student? Is that correct?
Patrick?
No, Deb can, you have the figures there with you. Yes?
It's like $3,500 per year for three days a week. And 1,300 for five days. That's what we pay for tuition to the community providers. The other students are going in our RASU.
Okay. I just, I just think it was incredible gift for pre-K, whether you qualify for financial need or not, anyone can be in pre-K. But once you get to middle school, guess what? No foreign language. So we give you this great thing for pre-K that's not mandated, and we have a mandate for foreign language that in RSU, one, you don't get. I just, not a lot of equity there.
Hi, I'm Gary B from Pittsburgh, mostly only. I have a question on the regular instruction on page three. It's more of a question, I don't know if it's about Deb or her. On the field trips, it seems as though there's an increase across the board. Is there a reason, except Pittsburgh had no increase, there was a savings from West Bath of 1,600. Is there a reason why the field trips have gone up in all the other communities? Is there more field trips planned? I mean, I'm a supporter of, you know, doing field trips, but I'm just wondering if there was a reason for that. Because it doesn't seem like there's a savings bound for field trips.
Schools itself, but it's also sometimes, I mean, we do go back and look at actionals. And there are times, you know, I mean, principals submit, they have to talk to the staff, and there are times when we, you know, question the field trip and make sure that it aligns with our curriculum or we can make that connection. Okay, well, trying to find some schools having an increase and some schools not.
Okay, well, I mean, it seems every school across the whole RSU, except Pittsburgh, stayed the same for an increase. I'm just wondering if maybe there's some savings there. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, I'll turn it back over to the board. I'd just like to get a little direction from the board as we take a look at this budget going forward. What are your thoughts? I've heard some comments about making the change to the five-day-a-week pre-K. Beyond that, I'd like to get some more direction from the board, at least that we can take back to the finance committee. I think the finance committee should take a look at the pre-K situation. Probably would be worthwhile to take a look at the foreign language situation. Jennifer?
Where is the conversation? Where, am I saying that as a community planner or is that the end?
Deb will show it. Page, that's on the, what page? But the total, the total in Deb is 15,000, what's built in there?
That's built in, yes. It wasn't in last year's Woolwich co-curricula, so therefore that's part of that increase. But it was in, built in BMS last year, which is put 15,000 in BMS.
What type of budget impact does 15,000 today kind of a difference? You look at removing something like that, where's, where's the impact? What's the result of that? Is there a direct correlation to being able to fund something else? Or is that such a small amount that it wouldn't allow us to do one on whatever?
Well, it's half your pre-K. You know, I mean, it's 15,000, that would be for something else.
I guess I'd highly like to see what could be done with that. If that, if that was redirected someplace else, what would be the impact of that?
Did you, did you have a program in mind that you were thinking of? Because again, it's, we're talking about a almost, you know, $27 million budget. $15,000 isn't, you know, it's, it's relative. $15,000 on 27 million is negligible. It's less than 1/10 of 1%. And yet, $15,000 could fund a fifth of a position or, as Deb said, could fund half of taking pre-K, you know, from three to five days a week. $15,000 might also reduce local impact by 1/10 of 1%. So, you know, for instance, Woolwich, it might go down from, you know, 3... So, you know, for instance, Warwick, it might go down from, uh, you know, three point seven-three percent to three point seven-two percent.
Well, okay, so, um, the Rosetta Stone program was called the Saffron Program, right? How, what does that equal, like fifteen thousand? What, is that a?
I would, I would not want to go back to a Rosetta Stone approach. Uh, again, if we're gonna go, if we're gonna support middle school foreign language and, you know, to personnel, and I think, you know, we have had discussions if we are able to get that into this budget, um, you know, again, I mean, depending on where your student is, um, on the, you know, on the scale, those are the, you know, that might watch this later on, is the question that we would face if we could find the funding is, did we start with sixth grade and have a three-year plan where, you know, then seventh and eighth? Or did we start, you know, with eighth grade, at, at seventh and eighth grade and build it back down to six, um, knowing that, um, you know, we've got a balance that needs our students at BMS and students at, um, at Warwick? So I would want, I mean, fifteen thousand would go towards a teaching position to get us started with the offering of middle school foreign language.
Well, I guess I, I, I would, it would be hard for me to justify, well, okay, how difficult? If you cut five hundred thousand dollars from the funding, things were reduced, right? I mean, is there, I guess I'm trying to see, like, what does that fifteen thousand dollars represent in the last round of cuts? You know, could we make a significant cut in a place where fifteen thousand dollars would make a much less significant cut to something? Or, I guess?
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're asking. So I was at the finance committee meeting when they presented that data. All, almost all of the cuts, and I can pull the list out, that made up that five hundred thousand dollars. And to kind of back up, the rationale for cutting five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget was because it was gonna impact the communities. Some of the communities were seeing as much as a nine percent increase. So the finance committee said, cut five hundred thousand out and try and impact as little as possible. And what ended up getting cut were not programming, was not positions, but others, so non-personnel items. See?
Yeah, come up with the five hundred, I mean, we, you know, Patrick went back and basically we shaved a little bit off, um, programs and, and requests, but maintained those requests. So everything stays in, just at a, at a somewhat lesser amount. Uh, the other thing that, that takes up, uh, for, for, a true, for accountable, considerable part of that, uh, five hundred thousand request is, uh, some, you know, fairly creative, uh, caution, looking at alternative ways to fund things that, that were in the initial logic presentation. For example, we're going to, later on in the meeting, we're gonna consider another contract, um, with, uh, with the architect for, uh, for that expense. And those are costs, current costs of the district, which are, will subsequently be reinforced by the state, but the district has to bear those costs, at least in, in the short term. And the recommendation that was made to the finance committee was to take those out of the budget, not, not to pay the tax, although what, obviously, we have a natural obligation, but not to use, uh, cash that, that is, is part of the requests out to the towns, but to look at our capital reserve, equivalents, borrow the money from the capital reserve, and then when the state, when the state reimburses those costs to us in a year, so that money personally can be replaced as fast as it's due. Uh, so those are the kinds of things we look at, uh, to come up with that five hundred thousand, uh, question. Uh, but as, as David said, as Patrick has said, uh, you know, we're not, we're not cutting both to achieve that. Uh, as far as flow goes, I, I, um, you know, I was cautious about flow last year, and I remain cautious about flow, but the, the one thing that, that I think I commented on last year was that, that we needed to fully prove it in the first instance, we should, we were making, for me anyways, it was making a two- or three-year commitment to sustain the flow. Uh, I, I don't know whether we know enough about flow and first year's experience to, to then take a decision with this budget to say, well, we're gonna cut out of, 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 the community partners that are lined up, um, Florence has had meetings with, with the parents, uh, at BMS and alcohol activity. And, and, you know, I'd, I'd like to see it stay for another year, I mean, uh, the burden falls on, 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 on Florence with circumstances, to really continue with the rest of those questions that the board had last year, and I think continue to have, you know, this year, which is how is this program entering the, of course, right? I was in support of it in classroom, not just as a, as a standard act to it, so I'd like to see it stay, what there's, you know, fifteen thousand dollars is, is fifteen thousand dollars, every, every, every dollar helps, but it's, uh, at least in this budget, I think it's come to the expenditure that we are making. Continue to revisit the question, I don't think it's a stream at all, I think we have to prove, uh, the, uh, the viability and value of this program, uh, going forward.
Anyone else from the board on the five-day?
Uh, do you know how much, uh, that's looking for language again would cost? We talked about the special education, I don't know what it costs. And I guess, like, the formula of that would be, it would be basically six hundred, like you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I would say minimum was, you know, seventy-five for one, you know, FTE that would have to be shared somehow between BMS and Warwick, so that if you added a little bit more to that, I mean, I can say it's in the range, it'd be seventy-five to, um, you know, one hundred and twenty-five, something like that.
And that would essentially be just the cost of the staffing position in the background?
Yes.
And any materials that would have all been?
How many, how many grade levels?
Well, again, Bud and Jason and I have talked about different scenarios depending on, you know, going into this budget and, and how, you know, whether we could get the money out of this budget and, um, you know, sort of, seventy-five is what we can manage to get out of this budget, what that would look like versus, um, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty. Um, you know, again, would probably limit us or restrict us to what grades we could offer the sharpest, and then off, you know, kind of phase it in over a two or a three or three.
Proficiency, where it's?
Uh, possibly, or, you know, maybe the, the, looking at proficiency base, um, you know, maybe we want to start younger than eighth grade and working way up, versus starting older and working way down, so.
Any other questions from the board on the budget? Okay, yeah, go ahead, I can take the mic.
I think I know, I know what you're talking about, but is it eighth-grade students?
It is.
Is it all eighth-grade students that are elderly?
Right, both at bath middle and at old.
Okay.
Okay, well, you know, the only thing that I would say to the board is, just take some time with this budget, examine it, and, and I think at a most basic level, or just fundamentally, what you've really got to look at is, one, look at the impact, the financial impact to your communities, and see if that's something that you feel is, is tenable. And also understand that the budget that we're presenting to you right now, um, basically keeps all of programming that we currently have intact, uh, it doesn't bring on anything new. I think the finance committee should at least revisit the pre-K situation and look at, uh, foreign language. But beyond that, um, I, I think that's, those are the lenses that you have to view this budget in. How's it impacting the community? How is it impacting kids? And as of right now, given the whole transition that we had, um, you know, without the revenue from West Bath, but also without the expenses from West Bath, it's, it's a little bit of a bumpy year. Um, but I think, I think, you know, Patrick and the administration has done a good job of maintaining programming, maintaining staff, um, in light of some big changes in the district, so. All right, uh, we will move on to item ten point three then, uh, to approve the proposed Morris High School, um, courses. This is an action item, and there are two courses before us. We'll start with item, uh, ten point three, which is imaginative two-D, three-D class. Patrick, I don't know if you want to speak to this briefly?
The process here, she can speak to it, um, I don't want to speak for her, but I think you saw at the beginning of this is that, you know, Art One is what we have now, and that we are creating these two courses to help alleviate, you know, some of the need, correct?
Correct. So these two proposed courses are to expand what we can offer at the high school, and we will not impact budget. Uh, I just want to clarify that, because I didn't, we did, as a department, ask for more money, but, um, we think that we can run these classes with what we have and what we already lead-based, what we can get. And the sculpture, well, the first course, the imaginative, imaginative drawing is to kind of pick up the, the huge numbers in our Art One course, where they're not, um, not so keen on doing the observational drawings, but they really, really love that imaginative drawing, that we can still kind of pull into our, um, standards-based curriculum. So we're trying to, trying to get a little more engagement happening in the, in the classes. And the sculpture class is to bring more of that hands-on, three-dimensional, plus the surrounding schools, high schools also offer sculpture, and we used to offer sculpture way back when, and we haven't had it due to the number of art teachers that we have, we only have two of us. But perhaps offer it as a every other semester kind of thing, so that, um, it's not just clay-based, it's using recyclables and, you know, doing a little more with the environmental kind of aspect of, of arts, so. Um, we're just trying to expand the offerings and freshen up the, the offerings of our departments, so.
So these classes would be in addition to the Art One class, or they would take a place in addition to?
In addition. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna take these two together then, and I move that, uh, we approve these two classes, imaginative two slash three D, um, drawing and sculpture one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bill? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Then it passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item ten point four, uh, we have the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school calendar. Uh, this is an action item.
Judy's here, she can speak to just some of the highlights of this. I think the biggest thing to notice next year, pay attention to the calendar, is Labor Day comes so late next year, um, so Judy can kind of walk you through the major issues.
Good evening. Um, the process of the calendar for the following year usually starts at Joel's, uh, conference table with the superintendents that all send students to the RCTC, because you probably remember that we are, by law, uh, we must have no more than five dissimilar days amongst all the districts that's sent to the RCTC. So that's always a challenge. Um, we have, with Bay, it's passive like an academy. Oh, no, of course. Um, so the superintendents meet and share, uh, their sort of draft calendars, and we, you know, try to align our professional development days and things like that, so that those days are not dissimilar as much as we possibly can. Um, because Labor Day is so late this year, uh, the superintendents all decided that we would try to start before Labor Day, otherwise we'd be going really until July next year. Um, we did run into a bit of a snag, uh, because the teacher's contract in this district has a clause in it that limits how much we can go before Labor Day. Uh, and when we discovered that, Patrick met Dave Cowie and asked him to, um, survey the membership about whether they'd be willing to go before, and that was a positive, so we have gone ahead with this draft calendar. Um, we do send the draft out to everybody in the district for feedback, and then I, um, meet and consult with representatives from the SCA, uh, with the draft calendar that we think is going to be the final one, but isn't necessarily, to get feedback, they get feedback from the membership again. And, uh, so we always hear, uh, you know, Christmas vacation longer, and, you know, things like that, they always work to the table. Then, um, once I've had that feedback, um, Patrick and I usually meet, and then we take the calendar to the administrative team. So that's kind of the process we've been through to get to this point. Um, we are also required now, um, the state is requiring us to have a calendar to them by April fifteenth, is it? In the past, it's been in May, and this is earlier, you might find this earlier than it's typically been in the past. So with that said, um, you will see that we have two professional development days that last week in August, we typically have two professional development days before school starts. One is usually a, a, a district, um, professional development focus, and the other one is school-based. So students start school on the first, uh, with pre-K starting a week later. We have one professional development day in October, which is the same day as the, um, second Friday that we had this year. Uh, the only change in November is that we moved parent-teacher conferences from that third week in November to Thanksgiving week. Um, at least that way, the principals and, and the feedback we got actually from the SCA, they felt that, uh, having those three weeks of pretty concentrated academic time, whereas Thanksgiving week is interrupted anyway, so, um, we have made that move. Um, Christmas vacation isn't the full two weeks this coming year. As you will see, it starts on, on the twenty-third, and that was something that was agreed to, um, with the area superintendents. January professional development day was earlier this year, um, I think it would have been, if we had kept it the same, it would have been on the fifteenth. Um, again, the feedback from the SCA was that we just get back from Christmas vacation and we have a PD day, so we moved it later in the month. February is the same, March is the same, we just moved that, um, forwarded that professional development day, same day we had, uh, last week or a couple weeks ago. Um, April is the same as it's May, and June, uh, the last day of school will be the seventeenth, and there are five snow days that'll turn out this calendar, as we did this year.
Any questions for Judy on the calendar? I just have three, and I think you've touched on them. I just want to make sure, Joel, we're good with this, with the other? We're in sync? Okay. And then, I know in years past, we had, there have been issues after the fact with regard to religious holidays, we've covered those bases?
Yes.
And the SCA is good with this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, this is an action item. Move to approve by Bill, second by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve this calendar, raise your hand? Okay, passes. Thank you. Thank you. All right, item 10.5. We have an out-of-state field trip. It's a joint field trip with JMG and BRCTC. This is with the BRCTC automotive students. Patrick, did you want to talk about this one briefly? This is a new one, I think.
Yeah, it is. I mean, if you turn it over, you know, they go to the Universal Technical Institute. Again, like Tim said, it's a joint partnership between our automotive program and JMG. The reason I need your approval tonight is it's an out-of-state, it's not overnight, an out-of-state field trip.
Any questions on this field trip? Move to approve by Steve. Second by Bill. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve? Okay, passes unanimously. They have a good time. Okay, next item, item 10.6. To approve the EdSpec services from Lavalley-Renzinger Architects. This is regarding Morris High School. This is the contract, EdSpec's contract. Patrick, I don't know if you want to address this at all?
It's for $16,500 plus $2,000 for the educational expenses, so $18,500. Like Tim talked about at the beginning of the meeting, this is really for our architectural firm to lead the visioning-missioning process with a visioning committee. As well as any community member will be invited and welcome to any of those meetings that we'll have. And I think we're expecting a calendar here pretty soon. And I believe it's going to be Wednesdays, you know, for the most part, in the evenings, that there'll be opportunities for people to come from the public to be involved in that mission-visioning and what we would like to see for a 21st century school, you know, at Morris High School. And this document's fairly thick. And the reason it is is because there's seven questions that are required to be answered from the main Department of Education. And again, they're all focused on the visioning-missioning outcomes that we want from a new or renovated school. So it's important, as a board member, there's a line in here, I don't know if you caught it, but that when this final product is done, with all the feedback that we get from staff and from the community, volunteers and parents, is that the board will officially approve the EdSpecs.
Any questions for Patrick on this? Concerns about the contract? Okay, I had a couple. On page three of eight, they reference under the fee summary, the owner will pay the designer for design services leading to the June 2013 referendum. I think that changed. And I don't even know if we're having a referendum.
Yeah, eventually we will, obviously.
Won't be in 2013. In the third paragraph down on that same page, it says, "All seven DOE EdSpec questions from the something that will be addressed through this process." I'd just like to know exactly what that, what they're referring to. It's just, I think it's, they either omitted a word or put in something else. Then, specific to the contract, I wanted to know, they list that this contract is not to exceed, we don't want to exceed 18,000, is that correct? But then they list, they're required to have four meetings.
Yeah, unless, I mean, that's the fees, is it? We'll not exceed them out unless we request from them for additional meetings. And if we request for additional meetings, then it would be their mileage, you know, to come.
Okay. I was all excited, I was going to have like a dozen meetings. Really get our money's worth. All right, those are the only questions I had. I did, just to reiterate you, it was on page six of the EdSpecs, just to bring to the board's attention. It says, "The school board must formally vote to approve the final version of the EdSpecs prior forwarding them to the Department of Education." So this is a process we really want to be involved in. Any other comments, concerns about the contract?
That might be my question. I do hope, and Tim, you certainly addressed this at the onset of the meeting. You know, it's an opportunity for the public, for the community to get involved. The way I would assess it's an effort to design the school from inside out. So make, as a entity, certain decisions on what we want the school to provide, how we want the school to relate to the community. And with the architect, such a design building, or whether, or work to renovate at Morris, but the structure that's not accomplishing the education goals, objectives that are to be set. So it's going to be an exciting process. And I do hope we get the kind of anticipation for it and all of it. And I know the board would like to see the management's, how it would be exciting, but it's successful.
And I have heard from some of you in this room already that, for example, somebody has come up to me this, like the last month, and said, she said, "Morris building is structurally sound. Let's just renovate." And then somebody come up to me and say, "Why don't we put a, you know, an idea on a, some type of food bar and go into a kind of a library and make it more inviting?" I've had somebody say, "I don't really like the looks of the older school. I'd like to have Morris be a little bit more of a classical-style looking school." So everybody, the reason I said to share these little things, or why not build it at Wake Farm next to the, you know, our office? You know, all of those are people's opinions and suggestions. And why I'm sharing those is that after you get involved with the subcommittees, get involved with this visioning-missioning, because, you know, our architects need to hear this from you throughout this process. And it is an exciting time. If you sit here tonight and you have students in elementary, this project, if everything went smoothly, this project will be done in four years. Maybe that's a little optimistic, but I think students, my goal is to have students in there in four years, in four years. And have it done well, don't rush the process. But it is exciting to have your students and have our children in this district be in a cutting-edge educational facility. And we really would appreciate your input to this process.
Okay, anyone else from the board on the contract? Anybody want to make a motion? Move to approve the contract by Bill? Second by Alan? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the EdSpecs contract, raise your hand? None opposed, that passes unanimously. All right, item 10.7, first reading of policies. You were given some policies this evening. Again, this is not an action item. Somebody want to walk us through these?
Jen?
Yes. Of course, my policy looks up my car. So the alternative education program, this is our first view on it. We were discussing this in the policy committee. It was a question of that we liked the way this, I believe we liked the way this policy was written. We have this program already, I believe. Patrick, is that correct?
Yes, we didn't, we had it in a kind of a different version a couple of years ago. And then the board supported it, went back in. This is the first year in the high school in more of a true alternative education model. So we felt we needed a policy to support it.
And we, I think that the policy committee liked the way that we had kind of created the, why the focus of A, B, C, and D here in terms of talking about the program. Student achievement, evaluation of student achievement procedures. Sorry, I can't remember what the policy says.
Any questions? Any questions on that policy? Looks like there were just a couple of changes and additions of words and there was a strikeout. This was a policy that was originally adopted in 2010. Stupid assessment.
I apologize, I just appreciate my notes. No, no, I should have, usually I have my, my proportion.
Patrick?
Yeah, no, we just made some small changes. We really, I guess I would say, modified this policy to shorten it up. And it's really giving us the flexibility with assessments. Some of the comments that Tim made at the beginning of the conversation about standardized assessments. But it also got away, got away a little bit from the local assessment system. And it's more generic to just, you know, assessments that we may have in the system. Anything from standardized testing to just local assessments that we have across different levels.
And then finally, JJIAA. We talked about needing this policy because there was a difference between homeschool and private schools. And we reviewed this in terms of the participation in sports and in other co-curricular activities. And our want to include the students in our communities with our school and our co-curricular activities, wanting to balance the needs of each, as far as you want students with that. And did we have to get clarification? I think we're still working on clarification between this and the homeschool policy. Is that correct, Patrick?
There's more charter schools.
Charter, thank you, I'm sorry, yeah.
Particularly concerning. There's a stupid role in virtual tech. How is that, is that stupid? Have the opportunity to study.
I think they may. I think that's what the balance we're trying to strike here is. You know, students that are, you know, attend our school and being able to have that opportunity, having students with charter schools as well. But there has been some conversation that if a student decides to go to a charter school, then the charter school is responsible for their education. And in other words, they should be communicating with us if they want to access some part of our educational system, let it be just an elective class or let it be a co-curricular, extracurricular, and whether there's a fee that's associated with it.
What comes, for me, I mean, it comes down to the fee. Because students who are charter, all the, the state, state, they're worse than the cost. Students goes to those entities in charter, in that case. My hopeful, wherever, however, the balance is struck, then we are, we should go to any district that has a student cost for their students who are suspended, so what's right? The power of education. It's a way to assess charter, charter school costs.
Okay, so those four policies we'll be voting on at the next meeting. Just trying to make sure you've been familiar, Bill.
I'm a school. Lead panelists, from my perspective, needs to be more specific about the student being a resident or more involved in what they're doing. And I know that it covers a little general, but I want more specific.
Yep, you can take that back off the point. Any other comments on these policies? Item 11, we have one last public comment session. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Open the mic up.
Hi, I'm Carol Reese from Pittsburgh. And I just wanted to talk to the board and touch Reese on the issues with the busing in Pittsburgh. Currently, we have two buses, which was reduced from 2013. We moved from three to two. Which doubled most, if not all, of our children's bus ride time. One of the biggest issues is, one of our buses is currently late to school several, you know, a few times a week at least. She's never there before 8:25, which is the start time. I think the recommended bus time to arrive at school would be 8:20 to begin with. You know, they took, they took our third bus away to solve a problem in Bath. And now it's creating a problem in Pittsburgh, you know. And so I just want, I, you know, I want the board, you know, I can, I respect your budget cuts and, you know, all the hard work you guys do. But I think we really need to consider putting the third bus back in Pittsburgh.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Charlene Wyman. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I have three kids that attend the school. And I just wanted to touch a little bit on what Carol had to say about the buses. My kids are usually the, one of the first kids on the bus and one of the last ones off. They ride the bus for nearly two hours a day if I choose to let them ride the bus. Most of the times, I bring them in just because it's a really long bus ride. We had, we had this issue a couple of years back when we had the Choices busing whole situation. And I remember I was on a subcommittee for that. We, you know, we looked at whether that was, you know, a good idea because it was increasing the ride of kids on the bus. The buses were getting to school late, things like that. And at that time, it was recommended to do away with busing for Choices. So I felt like that solved the problem for Pittsburgh. But then now this year, when we've been downgraded to two buses, I feel like it's just, honestly, we're back in the same situation. Kids are riding the bus longer, arriving to school late. Even if it's a matter of just minutes, like two minutes, it's interruptive to teachers that are trying to get their day started. And overall, this is a really long ride. I remember when my children were little and riding the bus this long. Actually, pit stops were being made for my kids that were five years old to get off and use someone else's home to go to Bath Room. To ask a five-year-old to sit on the bus for nearly an hour, in my opinion, is way too long. You know, the two hours a day, 10 hours a week, honestly, I feel like the kids, you know, that's a lot, that's a huge chunk of their time. So I'm as well asking you to please give us back our third bus. I think it would do, you know, just a huge world of difference for the students if they had shorter rides and arrived to school on time. Thank you.
She's got a quick question for you.
Yes.
I could probably do the math in my head, but I'm going to rely on you.
Okay.
What time do your kids have to get on the bus in the morning?
7:40. And so they're not the exact first stop. So the bus starts in Popem. The bus that they ride starts in Popem, goes all the way through Popem, comes up to Small Point, which is where I live. Goes down Small Point, through the West Point-Sabasca area, and then back down Mainly. And I also feel like there's also, also just a concern of safety. I mean, when you're traveling over, you know, over half the town and all those miles to have kids on the bus that long in the winter months and stuff like that, you know, I feel it's a bit of a safety issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to add, since you asked, Charlene, her bus time. Our boot-up time at my stop is, I think the first stop is 7:27 and then the grade to school. to school at 8:20.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi, how are you? My name is Rachel Rowan, and actually, the bus isn't public for me because now my kid is one of the last kids on the bus, so it works fine for me. But last year, he was one of the first, and he rode the bus for an hour and 10 minutes a day, and then he would get sick on the bus, and then I would get a phone call, and then we had to pick him up at school because apparently it can't be at school once you're home, so he couldn't go to school all that day. So I then began just driving him to school because that was a long day of school bus. So I just want to touch base that I know how these guys are feeling, and it does stink. But also, for pre-K, I actually have three kids coming up from preschool next year, and five days a week would be amazing, only because right now, they go four days a week, and it's really not even long enough. They want to go that fifth day. But my son went to preschool and went through the Choices program, and now he has excelled in school un, like, unconditionally, like, he's, you know, 12 reading le, like, 12 reading levels ahead of, you know, his class, and his math is out of sight, and I just think it's such a great program and has helped my kids tremendously. So I hope that that's thrown out there, and it's big help, it's lovely. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'll be brief, I know we're kind of running out of time. My name is Danielle Paus, and I have two children at Pittsburgh. And there are a lot of us here tonight, I think, because we, there are two big issues, I think, is the busing and also combined classrooms. And then just the brief look that I took at the budget and listening to you guys, I'm very happy to see that we're being allocated for extra teachers that we went to hire this year, but I think what I want to bring up is Pittsburgh is a very small school, and just to keep in mind, in our, this R S U, now that we're losing less Bath, to, for you guys, to look at Pittsburgh kind of as a special situation, and we do need a teacher for every grade, and we can't be having kids riding on the bus for an hour. It's, and I know, I respect what a process it is to make the budget and put all of that together, but really, I think just keeping in mind all of the board members and formulating the budget, and looking at Pittsburgh as what it is, a small-town community school, so, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Move on to item 12.1, set next meeting date. We currently are scheduled for April 27th, back here at B M S. Any issues with that date? Anyone? Okay, then if that works. All right, just as a reminder, prior to the next board meeting, there will be a public budget forum on April 6th, so we'll be discussing strictly the budget on the 6th, and then, again, we'll be talking about the budget during our regular board meeting on the 27th. Item 13.0, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Bill? Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, raise your hand. It passes, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.